Good evening. Welcome to the regular scheduled board meeting of the St. Lucie County Public Schools for June 14th. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exists in all children in you. I believe all children equal success, no exceptions.
The first item on our agenda is the proposed adoption of amendments to school board policy 6.21. It is a public hearing. If there is anyone who wishes to speak to this item, would you please come forward? Again, this is a public hearing for school board policy 6.21. Seeing no movement, we will go back to the board. Mr. Superintendent.
Recommend the board adopt the proposed amendments to school board policies 6.21 as presented.
Board members, we have a recommendation from the superintendent. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
It moved by Ms. Holly, second by Dr. Mills. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's five zero. Item 2.2 is a ratification of instructional materials adopted by St. Lucie County School Board on May 10th, 2016. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to address this issue? Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to address the adoption of instructional materials? Seeing no movement, we'll come back to the board. Mr. Superintendent.
Recommend the board approve and ratify its previous adoption of instructional materials adopted on May 10th, 2016 as presented.
Board members, we have a recommendation from the superintendent. It moved by Dr. Mills.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ingersoll. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's five zero. We're on to our special orders of business. Mr. Gent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask Carrie Patrick to come up and we're going to tonight recognize our, let's see, our History Fair participants, our Project Citizen participants, our Outstanding Volunteers of the Year, our five-star school awards, and our star presentation. Ms. Patrick.
Madam Chair, board members, and Superintendent Gent, it is my pleasure to be here this evening to recognize the outstanding achievement of our students who have indeed, again, made their mark on the state of Florida with their academics, with their research skills, and with their ability to look beyond and question what is right with their world, and also look at what they can do to make it even better. The Florida History Fair is an annual statewide activity that enhances the teaching and learning of history for our students. Based on a theme that is selected annually, students use primary and secondary sources to research a topic that is related to local, to national, and to world history. The 2015-16 theme was exploration, encounter, and exchange in history. And this evening, we are so very proud to celebrate our students who were not only recognized for exceptional projects at the local level, but they were invited to move forward to the state level and compete. We have provided the students who are here this evening with their certificates in advance, and at this time, we would invite them to please come forward so that they can have their picture taken with our board and superintendent. Students, could you please come forward and bring your certificates with you? And as our students come forward, we have a list of students up there, many of whom are already engaged in some summer activities and some summer studies, but we do have Jacob Alberts coming forward, Omarkus Brooks, Travis Seten, Melanie Gachati, Adriana Hiller, Kristy Lembo, Justin McKinney, Alicia Morrow, Ravendi Paul, Jacqueline Pont, and Alexa Tango. As we stage for the picture, I would like to bring special attention to one young lady who is standing before us, and this is Adriana Hiller. Adriana was selected from all of the St. Lucie Public School participants as the one who had an outstanding entry for St. Lucie Public Schools, and we have one additional certificate and medallion for Adrianda. What we also appreciate each and every time we recognize student achievement is the fact that this doesn't happen alone. Our parents who are with our students in the audience, our friends and family, teachers and administrators who have been responsible for the success of these children, if you could please stand and be recognized as well. Staying true to the theme of history and social studies, let us now turn our attention to a seventh grade endeavor called Project Citizen. For seventh graders in St. Lucie Public Schools civics classes, Project Citizen is a program that promotes competent and responsible participation in local and state government. According to the Florida Law Related Education Association, this program helps participants to learn how to monitor and influence public policy. In the process, they develop support for democratic values and principles, tolerance, and feelings of political efficacy. St. Lucie Public Schools is proud to announce that Manatee Academy's team project that was entitled Keep Port St. Lucie afloat is advancing to the national level of competition in Los Angeles. Prior to receiving this honor, St. Lucie Public Schools has awaited an impressive showing at the state competition, which boasted a total of six middle school projects. Of these six projects that advanced to the state level, three of them were from St. Lucie Public Schools. Quite an accomplishment. The three teams represented at the state level were Southern Oaks Middle School, they had a conflict this evening, so their team is not here, Westgate K-8, who was also recognized as a top finisher at the local competition, and of course, Manatee Academy. At this time, we invite our team coaches, Ms. Megan Shaver and Lauren Kapler, to come forward with their teams so that we can celebrate you as an audience. You see standing before you Chase McMillan, Maya Chase, Danielle Dominguez, Carly Lynch, Ethan Schultz, and Leah Winsker. Again, we see many moms, dads, friends, and family in the audience taking pictures. Thank you all for the support you provide every day to your students. Please stand and be recognized as well. And we've already talked about the support that is provided in our schools, our extension beyond the classroom into our community, which leads us right into recognizing our outstanding school volunteers. And here to make those recognitions, we have our very, very kind, dedicated, and compassionate Mrs. Martha Underwood. Please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Superintendent Gent. I'm so happy and honored to be standing before you tonight to honor our Outstanding Volunteers of the Year for 2015-16. These volunteers have given over 200,000 volunteer hours to our children in St. Lucie County. The Outstanding School Volunteer Award is presented annually to school volunteers who have shown dedication, commitment to quality education in Florida. Volunteers are selected based on the number of hours of service, years of service, and unusual type of contribution or characteristic of services performed. The Outstanding School Volunteer Award recognizes a youth, an adult, and a senior volunteer in each of Florida's five reporting regions. At this time, I would like to recognize the three outstanding volunteers that represented St. Lucie County in Tallahassee for this 2015-16 school year. Volunteer of the Year in the adult category is Samuel Rodriguez from Weatherby Elementary. Mr. Rodriguez has volunteered almost daily for the entire day for the past seven years. He has accumulated over 9,000 volunteer hours. He volunteers in the classroom during events, in the evening in the cafeteria, assists in copying, filing, and helps cleanups in the cafeteria. I could go on and on. His positive attitude inspires students to do their best on the day-to-day activities. Students affectionately refer to him as Mr. Sam, and they look up to him as a role model. He is caring, dedicated, and eager to make a difference in whatever he is asked to do. Mr. Sam truly exemplifies the giving attitude one expects from a volunteer of the year. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Volunteer of the Year in the senior category is Carolyn Criss from Windmill Point Elementary. Carolyn has volunteered over two years at Windmill Point and has accumulated over 650 volunteer hours. She rides her bike to Windmill Point about two miles each way when she comes to volunteer. She works inside the classroom helping support with small group instructions in reading and math. Carolyn's volunteering does not stop in the classroom. She takes prep work off the teachers' hands by doing work for them at her home. She returns to school with the work completed for her teachers. Carolyn, you have taken dedication to a whole new level. Thank you for all you do for our students in St. Lucie County. You truly exemplify an outstanding volunteer of the year. Carolyn, would you come forward? Our volunteer of the year in the youth category is Jenna Pont. We presented Jenna with her award at the celebration for the volunteers we had in the superintendent's week today. She is a senior this year and is taking a class preparing for college tonight, so she was unable to attend. But she attends St. Lucie West K-8. She has volunteered for three years and donated a total of 932 volunteer hours to her school. She's incredibly dedicated to education. Not only has her family worked and studied there, Jenna has gone through the halls as a student. She works under teachers and assists paraprofessionals. Jenna volunteers in three classes, and each student benefits from her presence. This year alone, she helped with numerous projects and lessons, including PBIS door competitions. She added her creative flair to the finished product, and she has taken it from amazing to incredible. She deserves to be recognized as an outstanding youth volunteer of the year. She will always be a shining star at St. Lucie West K-8. Thank you, Jenna. Okay, I would like to present the five-star awards. The five stars was established to recognize the community involvement is vital to student success. In order to qualify for this award, a school must meet 100% of the criteria in the categories of business, partnership, family involvement, volunteer-student, community service, and school advisory council. The school must have a portfolio that documents compliance with each of the criteria. The school must also have a grade of C or above for the 2014-15 school year to qualify. The portfolios this year were phenomenal. Principals and assistant principals, thank you so much, and take back to your faculty and staff what a great job they did and are still doing to achieve this prestigious award. Would principals and assistants please come forward and bring your certificates to have a picture made? As you come forward, I will read the names of the schools. Alapata Flats K-8, Bay Shore Elementary, Fair Lawn Magnet, Floresta Elementary, Forest Grove Middle School, Francis K. Sweet Magnet, Lincoln Park Academy, Mariposa Elementary, Morningside Elementary, Northport K-8, Palmport Research School at Tradition, Parkway Elementary, Rivers Edge Elementary, St. Lucie West Centennial High, Savannah Ridge Elementary, Southern Oaks Middle, Southport Middle, St. Lucie West K-8, Treasure Coast High School, Village Before I leave the podium, could I ask all the outstanding volunteers of the year, please stand and be recognized at this time?
And as we round out our recognitions and celebrations, I would like to call attention to our two-star award recipients for this evening. Our first one comes as a recommendation from one of our St. Lucie West K-8 Dean Conduct Counselors, Mrs. Lauren Kozinski, and she is recommending one of our very, very passionate, caring bus drivers, Ms. Irene McIntosh, who is the bus driver for Bus 1818. During dismissal on May 17th, you may remember that we experienced some very, very severe weather. Our schools and our buses were told to move into safety protocol mode where we staged our buses at schools and moved children from the buses into the hallways. Lauren Kozinski commends Ms. Irene because she not only safely removed all of her students from the bus, she escorted them into the hallway and stayed with them the entire time, making sure that the students felt calm during this very, very uneasy time for them. She was especially attentive to the younger students, and she let them know that everything was going to be just fine. She wanted to make sure that you all were aware because she really, truly appreciated the assistance and going above and beyond to ensure the safety of her students. So thank you to Ms. Irene from not only Mrs. Kozinski, but from St. Lucie Public Schools as well. And it is also during a time of serious concern or crisis that we see people truly coming forward and really putting forth their best effort. Ms. Carolyn Wilkins, who's the principal of Parkway Elementary, has made a recommendation for Mr. John Davis of our maintenance team. She says, "I need to give a big shout-out to Mr. Davis for responding to our call about some standing water that was causing our parking lots to flood on May 17th. He worked diligently to clear and drain, and he even jumped into the flow so that she could make sure that her parents were able to arrive in an area that was safe for her parents and for her students." And she gives a huge thanks for Mr. Davis for a job well done. And accepting on his behalf, we have Mr. John Gillette.
During the school year, we start off with a performance by our students, but at least we started off with students tonight, so that's the wonderful thing. Students, and then community, and faculty and staff. It gives us focus before we go on to the business of the evening. We have two scheduled speakers. The first one is Larry Lee. Would you please come forward? And as you know, you have five minutes to say what you wish.
Thank you, Superintendent Gent, Madam Chairman, and board members. I'm going to do this in three, and I'm going to yield one minute to you, Madam Chair, and the other one to the superintendent. But anyway, I want to thank you for having me here tonight, and I was hoping that he would be here when I said that. But I was sitting there beside this young man, his name was Chase McMillan, and this young man just so impressed me with his mannerism and the way he carried himself the brief time that we talked. And I would hate to be running against him because I wouldn't have a chance. But I want to commend you for the fine job you're doing because just sitting here, I mean, I just felt so good sitting here to see these young people come up and see the volunteers, the principals, and that's what community is all about, and that leads me into what I'm going to be talking about. Back in 2013, we started an initiative in St. Lucie County called Restoring the Village, which is now being emulated around the state of Florida and even in Ferguson, Missouri. And we started out with Boy Scouts, but we're now doing some other things beyond that. And the northwest section of Fort Pierce, when I grew up, it was not called Northwest Fort Pierce. It was called the Lincoln Park Community, and everything centered around Lincoln Park. But back in the seventies, early seventies, it developed a negative connotation, so we decided that we're going to rebrand the community. We're going to rebrand it the Village of Lincoln Park. And you'll see a big sign going up on the corner of Avenue C. There's a big wall around it now, but on Saturday morning at 8:00 a.m., we're going to have the unveiling of that sign and some 500 volunteers. We're going to take 1.2 miles of 25th Street from Orange Avenue to Avenue Q. We're going to beautify that after the unveiling of the sign, and we welcome all of you that can attend to be there. But on Friday, we're the school board, and I want to thank Superintendent Gent for working with us, helping to make this happen. At Lincoln Park Academy, we put a call out all over the country to ask people who graduated from Lincoln Park and the other area high schools to come home and help us restore the village. And they answered the call. We have some of my high school teammates, Henry Melton from Las Vegas flying back, Alvin Miller from Nashville, Tennessee, Lee Ernest Ryan, who basically was head of Lockheed, is flying back from Atlanta, Georgia, Robert Weathers, who played in the Super Bowl, running back for the New England Patriots in 1985 Super Bowl, and I can go on and on and on. But these people, if you go to restoringthevillage.com, you will be impressed with the people who are coming from around the country back to Fort Pierce to give back and talk with the kids. And on Friday, starting at 10 o'clock at Lincoln Park Academy, we're going to have these very successful executives, physicians, attorneys, business leaders, educators, come back and talk with the kids. We have three sessions. The first session will start at 10 with elementary kids, then at 12:30, we will have middle school students, and then in the evening, we're going to have, around 2:30, we're going to have high school students. Reema Prince, who was one of the first blacks to serve in the NASTA program, will be coming back. I think he's a class of 1958 of Lincoln Park Academy. But I'm just really excited about this, and I've worked with many of you on this initiative, and I want to thank you for your support. And Catherine, I think I did it in three minutes.
Appreciate it.
I want to take a piece of your minute. Did I mention that young man's name? Chase McMillan from Manatee School. Keep your eyes on him. He's a future leader.
Thanks. Dr. Mills?
Yeah, I have a question to ask Representative Larry Lee. Do you need help?
Oh, thank you. Yes, I was trying to get through so fast. Yeah, we're looking for volunteers, and if there are any youth groups out there or parents want to come out, we're going to be there all day from 8:00 that morning until we finish painting some 24 buildings along that quarter. We're mulching, and we've had tremendous support from the city of Fort Pierce, the county, the police department, the fire department. But yes, we're looking for volunteers. Thank you, Board Member Mills.
Thank you.
Representative Lee, just one other question. If people are unable to come out, are you asking for people to drop off water or food or anything like that to help the volunteers?
Well, that's a good question. You know, and to be honest with you, the water, we got 10,000 bottles of water donated to us by Walmart and Pepsi. So we're solid on the water. A Southern Eagle donated about 240 bottles of Arizona tea. Carter's Grocery donated 200 sandwiches. The Housing Authority donated 150, but we can always use some more. They're going to be cooking out there also because Allegheny Franciscan Ministries donated a bunch of hot dogs and hamburgers too. So, and we're going to have some of the sororities and elderly that are on golf carts that will be going around to the sites delivering water and food. It's going to be a really big day. It's about the village.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next scheduled speaker is Ms. Alice Custis. And Ms. Custis, you will have five minutes also.
Okay, thank you. I have a timer on my phone so that I can start it. Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Gent, and other parents, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I stand before you though because I want to know why. As a parent, I sometimes cannot answer that question, and I'm sure you will be able to answer it tonight, probably not, but I think it is one of the most important questions our children can ask, and it is something we as parents and good citizens should do. We should question, we should ask why. Ms. Patrick talked about questioning what is right. I am proud to be a product of the St. Lucie County school system. I graduated from Fort Pierce Central when it was off of Edwards Road, and Mr. Gent was Coach Gent. As a student, I learned a lot of valuable information from a lot of fantastic St. Lucie County teachers. My mom is a St. Lucie County teacher, especially when I asked the question, "Why?" Now, I'm a parent, and despite what I recently learned, I don't know the answer to that question. What I do know is that we as parents can make public records requests for a teacher's personnel file. I'll confess that until recently, I did not know that information was available as a public records request, but it is. You might ask why I felt driven to request personal records, and I'll tell you that until recently, I did not hesitate to entrust my child to your care for seven hours a day, but that trust was broken by my child's music teacher. It didn't occur to me to ask for personnel records because in my wildest dreams, I would not have thought that a music teacher would discuss graphic information regarding catheters with my with my eight-year-old. So, I have learned a valuable lesson. If I'm going to check for references to see which dog sitters are reliable, that as a consumer of the services provided by the board, I might want to know a little something about the service provider's professional qualifications. So, I'd like to share with other parents what I learned could be gleaned from public records requests. A requester might learn where their child's teacher went to college, or they might learn, as I did, that their child's teacher has been accused of flashing two other employees. If you make a request similar to mine on that individual, you can see a personnel improvement plan, bullying accusations by multiple parties, including coworkers and other parents, refuses to sign performance-related documents and other information that you might find worrisome. You can request emails. The public records requests might enable you to stumble upon the use of taxpayer-supported email account for personal business. A word of caution, however, I'd also advise other requesters that based on my experience, bullying complaints and performance improvement plans don't get sent when you ask for, quote, "any and all documents related to personnel and performance records." So, requesters might want to ask for those items specifically. So, I've learned a lot of things from a public records request. What I haven't learned yet, and what I don't know if I can learn from a public records request or from this venue, is why this person is allowed to have daily unsupervised contact with small children. Because frankly, as well-educated as I am, and I have the multiple degrees, the honors, and the student loans to prove it, I cannot understand why someone with this history is allowed to continue working with our children in our school system. Three minutes. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ms. Custis. Mr. Gent, do you have anything you would like to say?
I appreciate her coming forward. The allegations and things that were mentioned tonight, everything was investigated by our school district, and there's no truth to any of it. Thank you.
Are you calling me a liar?
No, I'm saying that they were thoroughly investigated by the allegations, by the school district's HR department, and found unfounded.
CTA report?
Good evening. You know that when I come to you with a written, prepared statement that I intend to read, you know that I'm being very deliberate about my words, and what I'm intending to say is what I mean to say. So, I am proud to exercise my protected, concerted right to represent my members and say the following. One of the components of our democracy is that any member of the public can come and speak and criticize their government, and I agree that they should be allowed to do that on any topic that they choose. And we can't prevent it as a government entity or as people. We don't want to prevent it. Of course, there are some limitations to that free speech when it potentially moves over to slander. And just for the sake of argument, let me just make sure we all understand what slander is. It's the action, or crime actually, of making a false spoken statement damaging to a person's reputation. Some synonyms, in case you need them. Libel, smear, tarnish, taint, blacken someone's reputation or name. Slander is a civil wrong that can be the basis of a lawsuit. Throwing excrement at the wall and insinuating malfeasance or salacious activity by a teacher or anyone else who works for this school district or who I represent by only sharing part of the story when you have had access to and know the full, less salacious, and non-newsworthy facts is disingenuous at best and slanderous or libelous in practice. And quite frankly, this week, this week of all weeks, spewing vitriol and hatred with no discernible purpose, without a real reason, because your grievances have already been heard and addressed, seems to be only because perhaps there's a grudge, or perhaps someone wants the last word, or simply perhaps maybe they want to be on TV. As board members, I know you have received information about the things you've heard tonight, and Mr. Gent has addressed them. And for once, I agree with the school district. There is nothing to see here, so let's just move along.
Thank you.
Board members, we're on to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
It's moved.
It's been moved as seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed carries 5-0. We'll have a recommendation from the superintendent.
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Board members, we have a recommendation from the superintendent. Is there any item that needs, you wish to be polled for separate vote or for discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Move by Ms. Hilsen. Second by Mr. Ingersoll. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. First off, I'd like to recognize two new principals at the May meeting. Joe Lazo was approved as the intern principal for Fort Pierce Westwood High School. I'd like for Mr. Lazo to come up. And Mr. Lazo is going to take the long way, so I'll talk about him as he comes up. Mr. Lazo is currently an AP, but now is the intern principal at Westwood High School. And we approved the job, a job description. He's going to be working this year closely at the school center with the administrations. And he then will be, after a year, in all likelihood, not in all likelihood, will be taking over the duties of principal. So, it's kind of like a training program for him. He'll work closely with Mr. Lynch, who's done an outstanding job at the school this year, helping out the school and helping really just do a remarkable turnaround. So, Joe will be working directly with him, and then we will let Joe spread his wings and take over after a year. So, we're very excited about this, and Mr. Lazo, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Superintendent Gent, board members, first and foremost, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank God for giving me this opportunity, and my wife Tangela, my three beautiful children, Cordell, Alexandria, and little Joseph. And I am pleased and excited at the same time with the challenge that I'm faced with in front of me. I know with Executive Director of School Transformation, John Lynch, at the helm, Assistant Principal James Sloan, Leslie Taylor, and Armus Mai Tai, and myself, we will make Westwood, bring Westwood back to the prominence that it was before, to the acceptable level for not only the school board member, but also the community. And there's so many individuals that I would like to thank at this time who are possibly standing in this room, but there's just too long of a list. But they know who they are. I thank each and every one of you for paving this opportunity for me. Thank you very much.
And then taking over the helm at Port St. Lucie High School, I'd like to bring up Mr. Adrian Ocampo. Mr. Ocampo is coming to us from Palm Beach County. It's someone that I've known in the past. He was given the challenge of one of the most difficult high schools in the state of Florida around three years ago, did a dramatic transformation of that school, brought the graduation rate from the seventies, low seventies, into the nineties, and I'm just honored to introduce Mr. Ocampo.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Superintendent Gent. I'd like to, first of all, let you know that I'm thrilled to come on board and become the principal of Port St. Lucie High School. I promise I will go directly to the mall and buy myself a red and black tie. So, the next time you see me, I will have some school spirit. I have had the opportunity to work or to meet many of my colleagues last week at a meeting, where it was a leadership meeting, and we had some time to talk and discuss their various plans for next year, and I'm looking forward to implementing a lot of those plans. I also, last week, met several of my students, one of which were here today. It was Cadet Seaton, and we did a high ropes course over at the ROTC Challenge area down in Jupiter. And I will say that even though we just met, we were 40 feet up, and I think he saved my life. So, he, so he's gotten off on the right foot. He was here tonight. He was receiving a history award. In any event, I'm looking forward to taking over the helm at Port St. Lucie High School and making sure that we can make, get the students and the community and the teachers to be the very best that they can be.
Our test results came out last week, really on Friday, and in your boxes, you'll find a hard copy of the data that's by school. We're continuing to break it down, but I just wanted to talk about a couple of the highlights. In grades three, five, six, eight, and 10, we improved in our English Language Arts area, particularly in grade eight, there was an increase of over 7% within one year. In mathematics, grades three, four, five, seven, and eight improved their performance. Five out of six grade levels, grades three, four, five, and eight increased their proficiency levels on the math portion, and they were led by the third and the fifth grades with an increase of four percentage points each. Bay Shore, Fairlon, Windmill Point, Manatee, Westgate increased their proficiency at every grade level in math, and Bay Shore increased in double digits in every grade level in math. Overall, our statewide science assessments and our students in grade eight increased their performance level by over two percentage points. So, we've got, and we also have areas that we need to work on and be concerned about, and we'll be focusing on that. So, we're continuing to break the data down. We'll break it down by school. We'll break it down by individual classrooms in an area not to get anybody, but in an area to offer legitimate support to our school centers. Our graduation rates won't become final until the fall through the convoluted system that the state utilizes. And so, I can say with pretty much full certainty that we will surpass the state average in our graduation rate. We will surpass the 80% range. We will have possibly three schools within the 90% range of their graduation rate, a couple of schools in the eighties, and maybe all of our schools will be 80 or above, our comprehensive high schools. And so, we'll wait to see what the official figures show, but, and everyone was at the graduation, but it's been a great year, and we've had a focus on that. We will bring that same focus and the same strategic planning with our, with our schools. I'll talk more the next time we meet about my specific goals for next year, but one will be, and it's been all along this year, with our literacy, particularly our early literacy for our students from pre-K through third grade, and working with community partners, as well as some of the other areas that we need to delve into. So, as we wrap up our first year, and my first year with you all in a long time, I think it's been a successful year. I look forward to sharing that with you next month on some of the accomplishments, and then the following month, getting your feedback as well regarding that, if not sooner. But it's been a good year academically for us. It's been a good year for the school district. I think the board should be very proud of their teachers, their principals, the support staff, everyone that makes this happen. And, you know, we have to move forward to next year. I always tell staff, and they don't like to hear it, that Mark Twain says, and you can hear the whistle, the train whistle blowing now, even if you're on the right track, you'll get run over if you don't keep moving. So, we'll take nothing for granted. We'll continue to work hard, but I really want to compliment, I see many of our principals and APs that are in the crowd tonight, and some of our teachers as well, and just say thank you on my behalf and on behalf of the school board for all of your efforts this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrell? Board members, Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, Mr. Madden called me, and I have to make sure that I push Bye Bye Birdie this So, Wednesday night, Thursday night, and Saturday and Sunday nights are still available. You can get them at Joy's Ice Cream, Sweet Jaws, and that's all I remember. Please buy your tickets. Or at the high school.
Mr. Gent?
The train whistle that was going off was a general reminder that I missed two folks. We have two assistant principals. I'm just going to ask them to stand. When you get principalship, you get to come up and talk. But we have two new appointments and excited about that as well. Over at Westwood High School, Mai Tai Armus. Ms. Armus, please stand. And she's worked at the school this past year. She went over there. She was handpicked by John to come in and has done a remarkable job. And also at Dan McCarty Middle School, Keonisha Bobo will be joining them as assistant principal. Ms. Bobo also is no stranger to Dan McCarty. She's worked there and has done an outstanding job, has a good reputation with the students and the community, and so we're excited that she's now officially the assistant principal.
Dr. Mills?
Good evening, everyone. I want to especially address our parents that are out in the community and regarding your child. This summer, we have something called Summer Slide. It is on our website, the school website, and it is absolutely fabulous. I am a first user of it myself at my after-school program, and we have all of our public school students on our iReady all summer long. So, I want to encourage the parents, you can go on that site, anyone can go on that site. All of our after-school programs, all of our summer programs out there, please pull that up for your children that are at your facility and help them, keep them from sliding back over the summer months. The children are, you know, they don't really want to go to school during the summertime. So, iReady, you got to, as far as the programs out there, you got to encourage your children to get on your, the computers. We have a computer lab of 14 computers, laptops, and we are going through all 65 of our students on this Summer Slide. This is the first time we've ever done it in the district. It starts from VPK all the way through high school, all the way through 12th grade. So, at home, you can go on it with your child. And as I said, after-school programs, please help us. Help us keep our children where we want them at. We've got wonderful progression on our state assessments and so forth. Let's keep it like that. Let's do our part as a community and make sure that our children stay top-notch for the summer. Thank you.
Ms. Holly? Ms. Hilsen?
I attended the teacher fair, and I shout out to our human resources, what a wonderful opportunity that was. And I met so many of our great principals, and I do have to say, John Lynch, Westwood had the most balloons, so you rock. But it was just a great experience for me, and I really want to go back and maybe meet some of the candidates that are coming into St. Lucie County School and the opportunities. So, I think the fairs are just a great idea. I appreciate it. Thank you.
This past week, we had our School Board Association meeting in Tampa, and I would encourage you to go on the School Board Association FSBA website. All the information is there. All the workshops are on there. This is the first time that everything that we saw is actually going to be on the website so anybody can access it. We ended up putting in a few more subcommittees to do special topics, special things that we hadn't had before. And Ms. Holly is now an officer in our consortium, so unanimously elected, somewhat reluctantly, but unanimously elected. And we had a very good time because we actually had some opportunities to interface with some people in a different way than we've had in the past. So, it was a very successful event, very good speakers, and I will tell you that our School Board Association is well. It is going, becoming a little bit stronger, I think, and being more focused. We had great opportunity to meet with members of the Superintendent's Association, and as you know, or maybe you don't know, years past, they were very separate organizations, and now we actually have a lot of dialogue, so we're actually becoming one unit, and that's very good. Having no unscheduled speakers, we are adjourned.